Good evening. I would like to call the City of Mount Vernon City Council Meeting for Wednesday, September 25th to order. The time is now 7:01. Would you please stand with me and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Item 1C is the roll call of council members, and I'll ask our city clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
Here.
Councilmember Brock Smith?
Here.
Councilmember McCourty?
Here.
Councilmember Hudson?
Here.
Councilmember Molinar?
Here.
Councilmember Gesserow?
Here.
Councilmember Vanderstue?
Here.
Thank you, Becky. Item 2, are there any proposed changes to the agenda or a motion to adopt?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Melissa, second by Mary. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Agenda passes. Item 3 is community comments. If there's anyone present in council chambers tonight that would like to address council, please come on up to the podium. And we would ask you to just state your name and city of residence and limit your comments to about three to five minutes.
My name is Arthur Gallegos. I'm at 1427 Alpine View, Mount Vernon, Washington. I won't take up much of your time. I just want to tell you a little story about something that recently happened to my wife and I, and then I want to tell you why I'm here. So, on 9/4/24, Steve and Kyle Crawford garage door employees serviced our old Craftsman garage door opener and indicated that the motor was partially broken and should be replaced soon. Steve told my wife that we had opted to replace the motor with a new one from the company. They would deduct the 9/24 service call from the cost of the new motor. The text arrived in the morning instead of the scheduled afternoon, but when I was not home. But I spoke with Steve on the phone, and he explained why I needed to replace the motor. When I got home, my wife and I discussed and decided to replace the motor with a new Liftmaster from Crawford, and I called the company to schedule the work. Steve came out, replaced the old motor with the Liftmaster, and programmed the opener and two new remotes, but did not program our exterior keypad. I called them to schedule a time for this to be done. On 9/11/24, Kyle, this is a different guy now, came out to program the keypad using the existing keypad, but it did not work. We asked Kyle how much the new keypad would cost, and he indicated that Crawford sold one for $60, but we could get one from Amazon for a lot less. My wife looked up the keypad on Amazon, and Kyle pointed out the one that he recommended and told that it was easy to program. We ordered the keypad from Amazon and got it the next day. On 9/12/24, we attempted to program the keypad by ourselves, and were not successful, and ending up deprogramming the opener and the remotes. We called Crawford and explained our problem and asked for help with reprogramming. We were given an appointment for Monday, 9/16. On 9/16, Kyle shows up. Kyle showed up for the appointment and appeared very upset and belligerent, very rude, and not even acknowledging us. He complained to my wife about us not buying the Crawford keypad and instead trying to save money by buying from Amazon. Now, this is the guy who told us to buy it from Amazon. He did the programming work grudgingly and abruptly, but threatened to charge us a service call for programming the keypad. My wife and I told him not to worry about the keypad, that we would get help from our son to program. But he programmed it in a way in a couple of seconds. At this point, he was very rude to us and told us that we have been a problem to the company ever since they had started working with us, and that he and the company did not like us. At this point, I told him to get off the property and start walking toward his truck. He started walking toward his truck, but came back and took a picture of our address, played on our garage, called the company, yelled into the phone that they were never going to do business with us again. I think he took pictures of us also. And all the while, he kept yelling out in front of the house so that the whole neighborhood could hear. He finally got into his truck, and as he was driving by our driveway, he stopped at the end of the driveway and yelled, "I have a gun." My wife and I were left with questions as to why the company does not like us. We paid our charges promptly and with our complaints. We are both in our 80s and not a threat to this employer or to his company. So I'm telling you that story because why am I here? Well, I called the police department of the City of Mount Vernon, and I was assigned a fellow named Doc Robinson, Officer Robinson. I told the Crawford family who told him to tell us that they didn't like us. They took our money, but they didn't like us.
Mr. Gallegos, I'd just wrap it in a half. Okay, to wrap it up in the next 30 seconds or so.
Okay. I'll tell you why I came for it. That's what I came for. I want to let you know that I'm going to file a complaint against the police department of the City of Mount Vernon. I'll seek the help of an attorney. The reason I'm doing all of this is to, that this does not go unnoticed by you folks and by us, the public, that when something like this happens, we do nothing, and then the fellow shows up with a gun and shoots people, maybe not me, but somebody else, because he has a weird mind, you know? He can hurt somebody. And you need to know, because our police department didn't do anything about it. By the way, I also called and left a message for the chief of police to call me. He hasn't called. So, thank you so much for allowing me.
Mr. Gallegos, I just want to make sure we have your name and contact info. Either, I think there's a sign-in sheet at the door. So, on your way out, if you could just leave that information for us. Thank you for coming and talking with us.
Thank you.
Anyone else present and wishing to address council tonight? Come on up. Again, we just ask that you state your name and city of residence and limit your comments to about three to five minutes. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and community members. My name is Alfredo Juarez. I live in Seidra Wully. I am a farm worker and organizer with Community to Community. There's a lot of community work here in Skagit and also in Wacom, and also in other parts of the state. I started working in the field in 2013 at the age of 13. Every summer, I would go to pick berries, and during the school time, I would go to school. As a farm worker, when I'm in the field, I get a chance to speak to other farm workers, some that lives here and the whole year, and others that follows the harvest season. Some travel from California and other states to here, Skagit, to pick berries. As an organizer, I do a lot of community engagement in Wacom and in County, and also here, Skagit. The reason I'm here is to bring to your attention the H2A federal program. The purpose of this program is for farmers to import agriculture workers when there is a shortage of labor. As I said, I am a farm worker and an organizer. I'm very involved in the community. In Skagit and Wacom County, there is no labor shortage. This year, in 2024, there is close to 35,000 H2A workers in Washington State. The increase of the H2A program is very concerning to us. In Skagit and in Wacom County, there is 349 H2A workers in both of these counties. The chance for local farm workers that live here contributing with their labor and tax, finding jobs, is getting harder. After working for a farm for many years, some farm workers have lost their job completely and been replaced by H2A. We are not against the H2A workers. We know people needs work, but we have to understand what effect this program have on our community. In 2023, WAFLA, the largest, the third-largest H2A recruiter in the U.S., bought a local low-income housing in Mount Vernon that is called Casa Grande. The building was home to members of our community with disability, very low income. They all have been evicted, and now that building is going to house H2A workers, who are here for a few months, and then the building sits empty. WAFLA displaced our local income community, and this is not acceptable. On August 9, 2024, WAFLA held an open house. Some community member went inside to see the condition of the building, and it is in terrible condition. Again, there were people living here. We have a picture of the condition of Casa Grande. I and many community members are going to file complaints with the Department of Housing and Department of Health. Again, this is very concerning. We have a housing shortage. We all know this. And losing housing space like this is not okay. I want to ask you to open a space in your study session to learn more about this H2A program. Thank you all for your work.
Thank you. I want to make sure we also have your contact information, if you can leave that for us. Thanks again for coming. Anyone else? Come on up.
Lisa Ellis, and I'm from Mount Vernon here. And I just, thank you, council and community members. I've lived in Mount Vernon since 2013, and my comments today are regarding the open house of Casa Grande Apartments as well. I attended their open house August 9. So, the apartment complex is located across from the library, the old library. So, the organization WAFLA, Worker and Farm Labor Association, owns and now operates it for housing contracted guest workers, the H2A guest worker program. So, primarily, my comments, my questions is, so I wondered how this organization, WAFLA, acquired this property that displaced the residents who live there to help house temporary workers when we already have a wonderful workforce of capable people in our own community? And that this housing is not for our current employment, okay, our current employees? So, I first heard about WAFLA housing from the MV Chamber Facebook post on June 18th, welcoming the organization. And then, there was also a chamber luncheon, May 24th, at Hillcrest Lodge, welcoming them with their CEO. So, it's kind of concerning when we have a lot of great economic development things already going on in our county and in our city, and then this outside organizations coming in. So, I'm wondering, just to bring to light, yes, we have a housing crisis here in Skagit and around the country. I myself am a renter for the years I've been here in Mount Vernon, because we can't afford to buy a home. So, and I work in the school district, and I know the need for people and organizations to work together after listening to people in the community, right? So, and here, this organization comes in trying to address something that really is not what they're addressing. They're not, they're not building, renovating that apartment for our current employment. It's for a specific reason, for different workers. So, my question, so I wondered, how do WAFLA, how were they able to acquire the property? That's my primary question. I wondered how, you know, did they get some assistance from city and county dollars? So, I just asked, like, can we get that information from city council? Were there some grants and assistance that would help their renovation of the building, which for an old building, it requires a lot of renovation? And I went and toured it, and they still need, I don't know how much money, to renovate their, their lift, elevator, their elevator. So, yeah, was there a specific county or city funding? Because we know that those monies can go to entrepreneurs and people in our economic circles already to help some wonderful housing here. And it's just really concerning, because they, they say in their advertisements, you know, Casa Grande, farm worker housing, many of their statements in their paperwork kind of cross over as farm worker housing, but really, it's for outside workers coming in. So, their messaging is very unclear. And so, it's very, very concerning to our community. And also, the displacement of families, we know the housing crisis, how that affects our children, right, going through the homeless cycle of unhoused people, working with family promise during the pandemic, Skagit, welcome home, Skagit. I know these issues are very concerning. So, if we can get some answers, it would be helpful to know what we did here in Mount Vernon to assist, and maybe are there some other ways we can work with other people in our community for more appropriate housing? That would be great. Thank you for my time.
Thanks, Ms. Ellis. Wanted to also make sure we get your contact info, and we'll follow up with you. Thank you. Anyone else present who would like to address council? Please come up.
My name is Christine Conard. Is that close enough? Okay. And I live in Mount Vernon. And in the 1980s, I was a visiting nurse in Skagit County, and some of the people I cared for lived at the Casa Grande. It was a rundown and neglected building that housed very low-income seniors and disabled people from our community. I believe it continued to house this population right until the WAFLA partner purchased the building and evicted the tenants. I'm concerned about the people that were evicted. And I don't expect you to answer all the questions that I'm going to present, but I'm hoping you're asking yourself, you know, what should be done as a community for this kind of situation? Because it is very concerning to me. Does anybody else worry about what happened to them? Our county has had the lowest housing vacancy rate in the state for years, often at or close to 0%. How did the City of Mount Vernon allow one of the few low-income apartment buildings to be sold for a guest worker program to house guest workers instead of our, housing our local poor people? And what was the eviction process? It's difficult for me to imagine these most vulnerable people even processing what I believe was a major crisis for most of them, or how many of them could possibly figure out and navigate the challenges that were being forced upon them without assistance. Were sufficient funds provided for the upcoming front costs of first and last month's rent and a damage deposit? Were the likely costs of heating, cooling, and electricity included in compensation given to the tenants that were evicted, considering their very fixed incomes? Did the relocation result in losing access to food, medical care, social services, and transportation? Because Casa Grande was very central to the services these people would need, and their mobility and their access to things is very limited. Was the eviction process fair and done with respect and in a manner that would preserve their dignity? It is my experience that when low-income people are forced to move, they must often give up items that they would like to keep or even personally treasure. It is also great concern that these individuals lose support of the people and agencies they have become comfortable with, and that's a trust factor, as well as losing their neighbors and friends that are in their network, and most of these people have very few in their circle. So, it is very important to them. Who is doing the follow-up on significant impact this will have on their emotional and social well-being? Further isolation in these circumstances is a bad thing, and it has resulted in depression, confusion, further isolation, and/or negative impacts from the many variables I've previously mentioned. I believe Casa Grande housed a very vulnerable population, often already struggling just to survive day-to-day. Neglecting to intend to the impacts of these evictions sets them up for a situation of harm without help. Let's not abandon our citizens.
Thank you, Christine. And again, just want to make sure we get your contact information too on the way out. Thanks so much.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Grace Cole, and I live in Mount Vernon. And I'm here to talk about implementing more bike lanes, because currently, many drivers hold the belief that bikers don't belong on the road, and as a result, they try to run bikers off or use intimidation tactics. And as we all know, road rage is a real problem, and many drivers prioritize convenience over safety, jeopardizing many pedestrians, bikers, and other drivers' lives. Where I think you should put bike lanes are main arterial roads like La Venture, Riverside Drive, and College Way. Also, as we know, the population is expected to increase, and we're already feeling the pressure of congestion and traffic. So, I think now is the time to prioritize other modes of transportation. And also, since Mount Vernon is a very car-dependent community, our roads are wide, which provide a sense, or false sense of security, allowing drivers to not drive safely. So, by adding a bike lane, this forces drivers to focus more instead of just dozing off in a routine. And yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Grace, thank you. Appreciate you coming to address council. Would anyone else like to speak this evening? All right. Item 4 is tonight's consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda includes meeting minutes, payroll checks, wire transfers, and claims. Council like to move for adoption of the consent agenda tonight?
I'll move to adopt.
Second. Motion by Melissa, and a second by Gary. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Consent agenda is approved, and we are going to committee reports. Committee reports tonight, council held their Finance and Parks Committee tonight at 6:00 PM, and Councilmember Hudson is the chair, and Mary's willing to give us a recap.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we started at 6:00 PM here in these chambers. As always, the first order of business is adoption or approval of our last meeting's minutes. Then, we moved into a discussion that you will hear tonight on our council agendas about our 1590 grant applications and allocations. 1590 is a funding tool that we, as well as some other cities, have adopted, where the money we make, make is not the right word. The money that we receive from sales tax, a small portion, goes into a fund where we try to or will be helping housing programs and actual buildings or facilities. We've had several meetings about our grant application. We had some wonderful projects presented to us. Quite frankly, it was astounding to me that we had projects that touched basically every bucket outlined in our 1590 allocation discussions. So, we talked about that for quite a while this evening, and that will be coming forward tonight for approval on our agenda. Next, we talked with our Parks and Enrichment Services Director, Jennifer Burner. She gave us a few updates. The Silver Arrow Bowman Club had a open house last Saturday, was attended to what they wanted their maximum to be, 25. It turned out to be 27 plus additional small children. It was very well received. Everybody had a really great time. There were people there to help teach people about bow and arrow. They're also having another event on October 19th. They're going to call it a trunk or treat from 1 to 3. There's no cost to the public, and you can go online to mountvernonwa.gov/parks and sign up if you're interested in attending. I had some discussion about one of the, some of the classes at the Jefferson Middle School, the 4th and 5th grade classes are going to meet at Bonnie Ray Park with our Parks staff, and they have a community connections theme that they're working on. So, they're going to be asking all questions park-related. What's happening at the Bonnie Ray Park? How do I get a job working for the park? Can I volunteer for the park? You know, those kind of good questions that we want to get our young citizens involved in being part of the community. So, that's going to be an exciting, exciting day for our Parks staff and those kids. Also, the Mount Vernon Rotary and Volunteers established a formal trail, starting from La Venture down to the 20, La Venture School down to 25th Street Park. It's a real defined path as opposed to just a grass meandering path. So, it's, people know that it's a trail to be walked on. And it's exciting to know that the Mount Baker Middle School Leadership Class has adopted the maintenance for this trail, which is a great, another community engagement tool which we're excited about. Jennifer also then gave us some brief updates on some of the deferred maintenance projects that she wrote a grant for and are being completed now, and then talked about some of the ARPA funding that we were able to allocate. It has to be allocated or expensed by the end of this year. And so, she gave us a rundown on some of the items that we were able to help our Parks Department with that they really need. And we adjourned our meeting at 6:56.
Thanks, Mary. I just had a thought. I wanted to put this in there, because I was asked about committee reports in council meetings. What are committee reports? The council meets in different committees every Wednesday at 6 o'clock. Those meetings are all open to the public. You can look at the agenda for those meetings ahead of time by going to the city website, clicking on Agenda Center, and then you can find both the city council meeting agendas and also the city council committee meeting agendas. So, those, that will give you a preview of what will be discussed that evening. The public is welcome to show up and observe, and then we give a recap at the next council meeting about what took place at those meetings. So, just wanted to let you know that. You're all invited to those if you're interested. Next, last Wednesday evening, there was a combined city council and planning commission discussion during the Development Services Committee, and Councilmember Brock Smith is here to give that report. Richard.
Thank you, Mayor. The joint committee with Planning Commission and Development Service Committee did meet on 18th of September, and it's a very exciting time in Mount Vernon as we prepare to update our comprehensive plan, which really lays out a vision with goals and objectives for how we're going to grow and develop the city, and consider housing and jobs and transportation and many important elements of city. We did start with some basic business approving notes, of course, and a Development Services Department monthly update. We do have a new front counter permit tech helping staff, and so, welcome to them. Revenues are down 20% year-to-date compared to last year, which, you know, the Development Services Department is a bit of an enterprise service. We try to regain the cost of services where possible for permits. We got some good news from Director Pratchner, that we received a $500,000 grant from the Department of Commerce to help us with climate change analysis, and that helps free up some additional funding, which will improve and strengthen our comprehensive planning process generally. We now believe that'll take us through much of next year, not just updating the comprehensive plan, but also our development regulations and having those all approved before the end of the year. We did get notice that there's temporary certification of occupancy, both for the library, which I'm sure we'll hear about a bit in the mayor's report, the new library that is, and also for fire station number 2. So, we're pretty excited about those developments. We then broke into really covering several of the big topics that we're going to have to tackle to prepare to update the comprehensive plan. We heard from our new consultant, who's going to help us walk through some of the early data assessment that we need to do. We'll be doing a housing needs assessment, which is really a gap analysis at what we have and what we'll need to house the folks that we know are here and are coming here in the next 20 years, and what our current land capacity will be for housing those folks. Went through several other, several other elements there. We talked about, next, the Public Participation Plan. This is essentially a document which outlines how we're going to engage the community and really make sure that we have a great participation. We have good ideas, that we have people who are working together to develop that vision of what the city should be, so that we make sure that we have the utilities and the resources and facilities necessary to implement that vision. So, this Public Participation Plan was drafted and shared with us. of what the city should be so that we make sure that we have the utilities and the resources and facilities necessary to implement that vision. So this Public Participation Plan was drafted and shared with us last, last week, and we provided feedback on that plan and staff and the consultants are updating it. It should be drafted and available for the general public's review and we'll, you know, kind of adopt it as a working document and work from that as we go through the next year. So I hope folks will take a look at that. We also talked about another component of the comprehensive plan that we've chosen to undertake, and that is the development of a downtown subarea plan. Folks know that we have a few empty parcels that are currently parking on our downtown waterfront, and there's other potential opportunities downtown for redevelopment. Now that the library is finishing up and is able to hold more parking, we have the opportunity to consider redevelopment of those areas. To do that, we want to make sure that we're documenting what the current vision is and using that public participation to really vet that and make it as good as possible and as much buy-in and support from the community as possible. And once we have that vision established, we would work with our consultants to develop an environmental impact statement that looks at all of that planning work and make sure it catalogs those impacts and how to manage them. And then we would develop a planned action area ordinance, which would essentially pre-authorize that type of development and the planning for that type of development so that we have a high level of certainty when we go out to seek partnerships with the development community to implement that vision. So we're, we're very, very excited about all of these pieces coming together in our comprehensive plan. Just a couple of other things I wanted to share, and I'll wrap up. We also had a chance to review what are called countywide planning policies. These are jointly developed with all the cities and Skagit County that really outline that vision for how we work together and what that future, future vision is for the region. And we had some recommendations from our Planning Commission on how to improve those planning policies, in particular to make sure that we're putting an appropriate and full focus on infill development as we are really trying to make sure that we're building a healthy community and not in, you know, around the urban core areas and that we're not sprawling out into our farmlands and forestlands if at all possible. So we did give some feedback on those. And those countywide planning policies are available for the general public to review through the county and the Skagit Council of Governments. We also had a good discussion about mobile home parks and the need for us to maintain our mobile home parks as affordable housing for many people in our community. So we did review the codes that govern those areas currently, and we talked about some potential ways that we could continue to strengthen renter protections in our mobile home parks. So we're looking forward to more discussion about that. And there is another agenda item for some other additional renter protections. And so that's an ongoing, active dialogue with our council. Finally, we did entertain a sort of a proposal to improve the way that staff is structured in Development Services. Modest, it's a modest proposal to split apart a current, and I guess it would be a staff classification and to add a half-time employee, and it would be a modest change to our budget when we hope a big efficiency for the department and also to bring on a new person that would get trained. I think it's an engineering tech, if I remember correctly. Yeah. So, so that was well received by the council. So then I think that's the end of the committee.
And that's the end of the committee report.
Okay. Thanks, Richard. Item five B tonight is council member comments. Council, it's wide open. Anything goes. Sky's the limit. Whatever's on your mind.
I do, I do want to respond. We don't usually respond to people who speak beforehand because we don't know what we're going to be presented at a council meeting. But talking about the H2A worker program, I do have a basic knowledge of that because I worked in agriculture for over 20 years. So I understand the premise of the program. I know that we talked briefly about the Casa Grande apartments, but it was just a very brief, it wasn't really even a, I don't know how to say this, wasn't really even an update. It was more just a, did you, you know, just more of an FYI, this was sold because it's a private, it's private property. There's, there's nothing that, you know, we are actually allowed, as far as I understand, that that's nothing that we can interfere in. And, and I will say, and pretty, we did not, there was no money coming from the city for that, just so you know. But I just want you to know that I, I hear what you're saying and I understand, I would, but I would really be interested in having a more in-depth conversation about just the whole concept so that the rest of the council has an, and, and citizens that could be watching would have more of an idea of what the H2A program is.
Thanks, Mary. Anyone else wishing to comment on anything? Okay. We will move on to item five C, and that is your mayor's report. And yeah, this will, this will likely be the last update that I give on the Mount Vernon Library Commons construction. As the work wraps up in the weeks ahead, the books are in, the plants are in, the sidewalks are in. It's looking mostly completed. In the next slide, you can see the second installation of that fitted glass, which is on the northwest corner of the building. That is a blueberry plant that's etched into the glass. The glass on the northeast side, the other side of the building, has wheat etched into the glass. You've seen that up for a couple of weeks. That is not just any wheat. Here's some trivia for you. That is the likeness specifically of Skagit 1109 wheat, which was developed to thrive in our Western Washington climate. So that's kind of a cool thing. But there are nods to local agriculture throughout the project, and I cannot wait for you all to see that as you navigate through this beautiful building. The interior photo on the right shows the community room with tables set up. This will be an amazing and, of course, much-needed meeting space for our community. So, and the next slide, you are invited to see it all for yourself this Saturday as we sprint to the finish line to complete it so that you can go inside the building. It will be done. Saturday at 10:00 a.m. Come on down. We will close the street for you. If you get there early enough and we pass our inspection, you can park in the parking garage. We'd love to have you there. And if that's all filled up or not available, there's, of course, parking on, on the River Walk and in other spots in downtown. So we are going to celebrate this monumental project. It is designed to bring our community together and spur on economic development in our city. So we are going to get together to celebrate it. That is your mayor's report for September 25th. Council, item D is committee agenda requests. Are there any committee agenda requests tonight? All right, seeing none, we will move on to item six, which is new business. And under new business, item A is the approval of an agreement with ACCO Engineered Systems for HVAC work. And Public Works Director Chris Phillips is here to introduce that item. Hi, Chris.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. First, I'd like to apologize for the new updated iPhone that I got that I was trying to hit the button to silence. It actually had the ringtone that everybody heard. So if you get the new phone, don't do it during a meeting. City staff recommends City Council authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with ACCO Engineered Systems in the amount of $121,037.68 for the Mount Vernon Police Court Campus HVAC Equipment Removal and Replacement here in 2024. This is the first project of the newly allocated ARPA funding that you had us go and take a look at spending back in, I think, the August timeframe. So this is the first of a few you'll be seeing from me coming through. This ARPA-funded project will replace the final two HVAC rooftop units, updating this aging facility's HVAC system to something that's state-of-the-art, energy-efficient, and sustainable system. Again, there are 11 rooftop units that are on here, so this will be the last two. And city staff recommends City Council authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with ACCO Engineered Systems in the amount of the $121,037.68 for the Mount Vernon Police Court Campus HVAC Equipment Removal and Replacement Contract.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Chris? Yes, no more.
This is an item that's already been budgeted for, then? This is?
Correct. The ARPA money is money that council, there was, I think, $2 million of that that came back to council from the Commons project. You approved the reapportioning of that particular amount. I think the facility's got about 1.2 million. This is the first in a series of five different projects that we're, we're going to be bringing before council. And as I believe the mayor mentioned, I forgot who mentioned it, that the ARPA fund, no, it was Jennifer, who had the ARPA funding has to be under contract before the end of the year, can be appropriated, I'm sorry, contracted by 20, end of the year, and it can be spent in the 2025.
Catching up on a lot of deferred maintenance, like HVAC units.
Yeah.
Other questions for Chris?
Chris, I feel like we've been updating our HVAC for a while. Is this the last of our units?
This is since I've been here.
Yes.
2016.
So this is the last.
We have been going through. So there are six units at the City Hall that have been replaced, so you won't hear me talk about them anymore because they're working appropriately. This is the last two here at this particular building. If Chase Bryce was here, he could tell you about the ones at Fire Station Two and Three. They've been updated as well, all integrated with the Siemens Disego Control System, which also will include the new Mount Vernon Library Commons project as well. So amazingly that we will have one control system for all of those buildings to be able to maintain our HVAC and control systems.
Well, I know this was a priority for you, so nice job.
Ten, ten years in Dominican.
You inherited quite a project and did a great job with it. Thank you, Chris. Other questions for Chris?
I have no questions. I'll make a motion that council authorize the mayor to enter into the agreement with ACCO Engineered Systems in the amount of $121,037.68.
I'd like to second. I'd also like to ask if you'll destroy the spreadsheet that you made like 10 years ago?
That's right.
It's a motion by Melissa, second by Mary with comments. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Motion passes.
All right, thank you. And I also want to say thanks to Sean and Braun, who are part of the general facility staff. When it comes to doing this part of it, that's it, but they actually do the project management and making sure all the bells and whistles happen safely and soundly for us everyone and keeps things within budget. So thanks, Sean. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Sean. Thanks, Braun. Item six B is a resolution to adopt a fee schedule for elements within the Mount Vernon Library Commons facility. And Library Director Isaac Huffman is here with this item. Isaac?
Thank you, Council, for considering the fee schedule for the new Mount Vernon Library Commons. As you know, you have a divided responsibility with the library board, and one of the things that you get to do is establish fees for the new facility. We have a premier space that you just saw a picture of that will be available for rent, and we need this fee schedule to do that appropriately. So we ask that you adopt a resolution to establish a fee schedule.
Questions for Mr. Huffman? Yes. Council member Brock Smith.
So I assume once the fee schedule's adopted, it'll be easily findable and viewable to the general public on our fantastic website.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So people will see that, and you didn't presenter, you don't have a slide for them to see it, but we're looking at $300 for four hours minimum and for residents, and then that's Mondays to Thursdays. And then Saturdays and Sundays, that's 750 for a 10-hour minimum. And so I did, that was a way of sharing that with the general public, but I also wanted to kind of ask our philosophy on that. I mean, I, I had a conversation earlier with the mayor, and I know this has been thought through considerably, and it looks great. I think we're, we want to make sure that we are getting under control how it's managed and that we're recuperating some of our costs. We also, of course, as a city, we want people to use it. We want it to be available and loved. And I know that those prices are, maybe they're a bit conservative, and they're, they're a little high for like a Kiwanis group or just a group coming in for an hour or two. And my understanding is that we're going to implement this and we'll make sure we know how to run the system and we, and, you know, kind of figure out how the finances are working. And I, I would assume or hope that we would have a kind of a report out on how that's going and be able to sort of adaptively manage if there's a way, Mr. Mayor, to make it even more accessible to the general public. Is that, I think that's what we all want, is to make sure that it is used and loved by as many groups as possible.
And balanced with?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Isaac, do you want to talk a little bit about the philosophy and the market?
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk just a little bit about the philosophy and then kind of what we're doing over the next couple of months, and then when we'll return to you with kind of data, of course, to tell about the thing. In general, there's two kind of philosophical elements to establishing the rates that we're establishing right now, one of which is it's a big room. It can seat 400 people, and it's, it's a big space for a big venue, and so it's priced, you know, a little bit more than Hillcrest Lodge because of its size and its, and its lovely technology features. We were playing with the intercom today, and it can, it can play music, it can do all sorts of things. It has beautiful like screens and displays. It's really a premier space, and so it should be, you know, like in that sort of realm for a use for a larger group, and so it's priced appropriately for that type of thing. We also, you know, do have a tiered selection for the, the, the space as well that prioritizes, you know, city use for our own use and then economic development activities and then just, you know, general public, you know, access to the space so that we continue to support the core mission of the Mount Vernon Library Commons, which is to provide economic development for the downtown region by supporting conferences and things like that. We are really just looking to establish a fee schedule for right now so we can get the facility running and have the first few renters. Without a fee schedule and without the legal documentation, we can't really do anything in that space, and so having that allows us to do that. We will have to look at that a few times to figure out if we got the price right, if we're making it too accessible, inaccessible, do you know what I mean, for the market as a whole? And also figure out what types of future states of rental we might want to have. One of the things about the space is it's divisible in a different way than most spaces are divisible. So it, you know, you may not need a space for a Kiwanis club that seats 400, right? Because your Kiwanis club is probably not that, that large. And so we will probably come back in the future and say like have a, a way to, if it's not being rented for the full facility, to split it in half and rent parts of that. There's a divider that comes down in the middle and actually pressure seals with the wall to make a sound barrier. It's, it's the fanciest divider I've ever seen, but it's also, you know, it fits into the acoustical design philosophy of the building as a whole. And so we'll talk about those issues as they come up, you know, over the next few months, and I'll really keep you engaged because, as I said, you know, in the division of labors, hours and fees are very much in the council's domain, and, and we want to make sure that those are appropriate for the public to make sure the facility is used as appropriately as possible, so.
We'll be getting more feedback and also just, you know, testing the market. We, we know there's interest. We've already got some who know the proposed rates and are very interested, so.
Yeah, we will have some bookings with this rate, for sure.
Thank you for explaining that.
Yeah.
Other questions for Isaac? All right, council, this would be Resolution 1059.
I'll move for approval of Resolution 1059, setting our rates.
Motion by Mary and a second by Yiddish. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Resolution passes. Thank you, Isaac. Item six C is another resolution. This one is for council to allocate the city's 1590 affordable housing sales tax funding to local agencies, and this is Special Projects Manager Steve Sexton.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening again, council. This is the resolution, and it's in your packet. It's really the culmination of several discussion sessions with the council, long deliberations, contemplation, and really some thoughtful dialogue that happened in determining the awards that we're asking you to propose, or proposing to approve this evening. So again, staff recommends that the council finalize and approve the award allocations for the city's 1590 affordable housing sales tax grant applications this evening. We did have- We did have $2.7 million roughly in requests for just over 2.1 million in funds available, much like most grant programs that you see out there for this type of services. And I was thinking about it, Mayor, you, you sat on the NOFA allocations this year. What was the award at that? Do you remember? Was it three?
I don't remember, but it was, the ask was significantly more.
Right. But I think, I think the, the funds available were about 3 million. Just to point out, these are significant dollars that you're awarding this evening, and I really think that this is impactful, and I really appreciate the deliberations you all put into this. So as I mentioned previously, here are the award amounts that I'm proposing this evening based upon the discussions we've had. It would be Salem Lutheran Church for their tenant improvements for Welcome Home Skagit, $50,000 that they requested. Mount Vernon Manor Annex, excuse me, planning for their senior housing project of $20,000. The Skagit YMCA, the new Oasis Youth Shelter, $542,543. New Earth Recovery for Cedar House Two Recovery Home, that'd be $375,000. Community Action, Colson View Phase One, total of $500,000 for that project. Community Action, Skagit County, Mount Vernon Resource Center, $50,000 in support of their services for the homeless community. Friendship House has two applications, both for the First Step Center, one for $50,000 and one for $100,000, that will enable them to install three more units at the Skagit First Step Center, $50,000 for construction of those, necessary for those units, and $100,000 in operational and maintenance support, as well as keeping in reserve $500,000 for the 2025 budget for the homeless outreach services provided by the Mount Vernon iOS team. Are there any questions on this?
Questions for Steve. Council, this would be Resolution 1060.
I would like to move that we adopt the resolution as presented.
Second.
Motion by Navour and a second by Gary. Any discussion on this one? Councilmember Brock Smith?
Yeah, I'd like to propose an amendment to strike Section 2 of Resolution 1060, as discussed in committee. And just for the viewing public, it's a, this is not questioning the, the projects and the dollars. I think we've had, you know, quite a good discussion about that in committee, multiple committees, and these are fantastic projects. Section 2 of the resolution essentially provides sort of pre-authorization for staff to move straight into contracting, and, you know, this is a new program for us. We haven't seen the contract template, and so I, I would propose that we, you know, just hold tight on that for a bit, get the contracts sent out, let us look at how that's going to play out, have that through a committee, but go ahead and approve all the allocations and, you know, get people excited and moving on planning to get this money on the ground to help people in the community.
So we have a new motion on the floor to strike Section 2 of the resolution, proposed resolution?
I'll second for the purposes of discussion.
Okay, a motion by Richard, a second by Andrew. All those in favor, or is there any discussion on, on this one? Okay, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. All right, so the motion for the amendment passes, and we will now, boy, do I need to, to redo the motion for the amended agreement, or can we leave it?
Yeah, we don't adopt the rules of preliminary procedure, but you can restate the motion as amended.
Okay.
Call for the question.
Okay. So Resolution 1060, as recently amended, is there a motion to approve that?
Someone.
Second.
Motion by Navour and a second by Mary. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. And the amended Resolution 1060 passes. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thanks for your work on this.
Thank you, Steve.
There is no more new business, and for item seven, I will ask our city attorney if there's a need for executive session.
No.
And with that, we will adjourn the City of Mount Vernon City Council meeting for Wednesday, September 25th, 2024, at 7:58.